Does that start with me? Yeah, a couple of questions. Is Joe Kuna here?
I'm here.
All right. A couple of questions I had last night, Joe, that I wanted to just address tonight. So... The first was regarding... I got a couple of complaints and a video sent to me downtown on Summerfield, where we have private contractors working at some of the buildings there, taking the snow and dumping it onto the street. Right, so supposedly the parking was significantly decreased because of that. And on top of that, they were asking about when will Monroe east of Grand be open? So like in conjunction with everything opening this weekend, plus snow being dumped on the street from some of the private buildings, and Monroe being closed there, it was like, I guess, a disaster. And I was just wondering if we could get an update.
Okay, I'll start on Monroe. You're referring to the area that's the South Street bounding to the South Grand Project by I-STAR. Both Monroe and Silver is closed. That will be closed for approximately no more than another month. What we did on Vibe, and we're planning on doing on this, is do a partial release. What that is, is we accept the pavement to the extent that it is as far as base, certain other things such as the utilities below the street, and we stop there. So it's a partial release. They were open the road at that point. The final release of everything, when the city accepts it completely, will only happen once the construction is done on site. We don't want to tear up the new road with any of the I-STAR. That's the purpose of the partial release. Worked with Vibe, we're going to try to approach now. We could push for a sooner partial release because of the snow that you bring up and the situation with parking. But I think I-STAR is a mental toilet and the city would be as well, since it's been in that condition for a few weeks now.
Okay.
So I'll start there. I know the block that you're referring to, there's one particular property maintenance company. They have been summoned in the past, not specifically for snow, but for yard waste that gets blown into the street, especially during leaf season and whatnot. I know the resident as well, and we speak pretty often. I will speak to code enforcement following up on that. And we'll see if a summons should be issued on that, and we'll keep an eye on it for the next one as well.
Okay. And then, I just had a question, I don't know if it's to you, but general like communication with the storm, right? So when we communicate something, it doesn't feel like it's consistent across, and maybe this is just like a work in progress, but like... So with the second storm, where it was like ice in the evening, like I got something from my school, I got something on Nixle from Ocean Township. And I saw on Nextdoor, Chief Ketti put something on Nextdoor, but we didn't have anything like on a Nixle. There wasn't a consistent communication, right? And I'm just wondering if there's a way, when we're communicating, like we can do it across the board, right? We can Twitter, we can Facebook it, we can website it, we can Nixle it, we can Code Red it, whatever it is. So that it's not like, if I miss Nextdoor, I'm not going to miss the information that's out there. So that was just one thing I thought. And again, I know it's a work in progress, and I know we have a lot going on. Other question I had last night was some code questions, Tony. I was just wondering about the final consent order. Did we... Did that happen on the 30th?
That happened today.
It happened today.
All right, so we have a consent...
The dumpster, yeah.
All right, there is one contention that Bob from Kuhn's still working out, the property manager, the president of the condo association, 321, has some difficulty around... Part of the consent order that says is that there will be no parking in that driveway area that has been cut out. So that's something that's being worked out right now in the consent order, but for the most part, it's completed.
Okay. And then, and I know we talked about this a while ago, and I don't want to put it on anyone's plate except my own, but I wanted to start to investigate like the city, and not just the city, but generally what we do in the city for workforce development. So as far as the city side, we have... Could you just give me a contact at who maybe I could touch base with over at the... For the city? Yeah.
Send that out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Ramona Thorne, and I'll send her a number. Or I'll get it to you after the meeting.
Okay, and I'll start there and go from there. I think that was it. Thanks.
Joe, I just want to follow up on snow removal. Sorry. Joe, I wanted to follow up on snow removal. How do we communicate with owners of commercial property who don't remove snow? And I'm really thinking right now, right here on Memorial Drive, where we had people walking in Memorial Drive because the snow had not been removed? What happens?
Typically, the code enforcement department goes out and gives... They do an inspection. And it's not just for commercials, it's for residential as well. And they would issue a summons as appropriate. There's a certain time limit in the code that the property owners have to clear the sidewalks. And after that time, they are summoned by code enforcement.
Do we go out and remove it in the meantime? Or we have to wait for that owner to remove that snow?
I believe from the time the summons is issued, there's another time limit where they have to clear it. And if they don't, it could be referred to DPW at that point for us to take care of it. It is then billed to the property owner. And if they don't pay it, it becomes a lien by the end of the year on the property.
Okay.
Similar to our yard waste and other property matters.
I have something. Tomorrow, there will be a recreation meeting at four o'clock. One of the things I want to ask you, Joe, is yesterday, they did some possible filling up on the far side, I would say east side of Fourth Avenue. But the danger part is 1200 block of Fourth Avenue. There was only... It was almost two accidents. One particular car had a pothole and almost hit my neighbor coming out of his car. So is any way we can fill up these potholes?
Yes, absolutely. We have them out again today. We're going to try to take advantage of the good weather for as long as it's with us.
Wasn't that bad today?
No, today was great. Tomorrow, not so much, but yeah, we're going to make a push. We're going to purchase a larger volume of the cold patch and have it in stock like we did last year.
All right. Thank you. One more. Tony, how about the name tags for the employees? We start for them?
We'll look into those. Tony will be looking at them.
All right, thank you.
So mine are... I asked most of mine last night, but mine are pretty quick. And Fred, I know I asked it last night, and we probably need some follow up, and maybe you would know, Joe. But if we gave a directive to... About switching Fourth... Switching the traffic from Fourth Ave. to Asbury Ave. And if we just did it, if we just redirected the detour because of the number of complaints on... Or maybe you can... Is this on the agenda? Maybe you could talk about a little bit of what's going on in Fourth Ave. Oh, then skip that one. Skip it, done? Okay. All right, forget that one. Tony, we talked about rebuild by design. It's going to give us some resources for grant writing. And we just need to send them an invoice, you're on it? Okay.
Did you want to...
I'm done.
Six thirty to seven to do the presentations, so we can start the public at seven? Okay, so start your presentations.
And basically, for the public's information, this is a follow up of the discussion that council had last night with regard to the situation involving Fourth Avenue and the detour concerning the Sunset Bridge replacement project. Council has before it possibly a resolution that's on the regularization agenda, number 2015 S-1, which petitioned the council for relief from reconstructing Fourth Avenue. A number of questions were raised by council last night about how to beef up that resolution and include specific asks, and also whether a detour, a different detour would be more appropriate. So this evening, Mr. Dean is here along with representatives of our police department to further engage in discussion about that.
This is different than the one I looked at yesterday, right?
Yes, this includes some of the asks after party with APPD, and a few others that felt was necessary.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so we will go ahead and start with notes from last night's meeting, which starts with the asks. I'm going to go ahead and go through this draft resolution. And just as a reminder, this is a draft, we can change it as we go along here. I think we've covered the most important, specific asks of the county in remediating the Fourth Avenue situation and the overall Sunset Avenue detour. So we'll start with the milling and repaving of the asphalt surface on the following roads. You asked that Fourth Avenue, Third Avenue, Pine Street, and Comstock be paved. So we'll go ahead and ask for that milling and repaving. Again, Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue are from Ridge Avenue to Memorial Drive. Pine Street would be from Fourth to Sunset, and Comstock would be from Fourth to Sunset. As you all may know, the buses continue to use Pine and Comstock as per the original detour. Furthermore, in conferring with APPD, we really think that the roadway needs to be striped brightly and clearly, per MUTCD, which is the Federal Manual on Uniform Traffic Devices. That would include a double yellow solid center line all the way down from one end to the other, obviously broken up by crosswalks and wherever necessary. And also, one outer white lane marking on each side, pretty much delineating the 12-foot maximum width of the lane. This adds to driver perception and should lead to slower speeds. We would be proposing that for Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue from Ridge Ave. to Memorial Drive. Also, we'd like to paint the crosswalk lines. I believe this was raised last night either by a resident or by council. Specifically, Pine Street was referenced, but in my opinion, and I don't think APPD will disagree, every crosswalk should be delineated along Third and Fourth Avenue. And in looking at the map, I've attached a map and circled the areas, the actual intersections. Just briefly going through. Third and Fourth Avenue at the intersections of Drummond, Prospect, Dunleavy, Central, Jeffrey, Bridge, Pine, Comstock, and Langford. Now, these can be scaled back, we could do every other, but in my opinion, delineating of the crosswalk where pedestrians will naturally cross anyway is the right thing to do. Furthermore, we would paint... Actually, that was Fourth Avenue, I apologize. Third is slightly different because of the layout. Third Avenue, we would delineate the crosswalks at Drummond, Prospect, Dunleavy. I write eastern offset because Dunleavy is slightly offset as you travel east to west. So it would be the... As I circle, the easternmost offset intersection of Dunleavy. It contains no south crosswalk. Central Avenue, Bridge Street, the westernmost offset with no south crosswalk. Pine Street, Comstock Street, and Langford Street. Furthermore, we would request the installation of the ground-mounted rubber-weighted base state law stop for pedestrians within crosswalk. That's sign R-1-6A on the last sheet of the handout. We have them throughout the city. We use them a lot in the waterfront, especially in the summer. So wouldn't hurt to ask for those at every delineated crosswalk. The installation of sign W-11-12, which is the lime green pedestrian crosswalk. It shows the picture of a pedestrian, and it's a diamond shape. And we would supplement with the arrow below it, sign W-16-7P. It would be either RL, depending on which side of the street it would be on, and that would be located right behind the curb at the location of the crosswalk. That notifies a driver as he approaches immediately upon the crosswalk that there is a crosswalk for pedestrians there. Furthermore, we would enhance those with pedestrian walk, crosswalk same sign, except we would supplement with ahead, the word ahead is a separate sign, W-16-9P. And those are usually based upon the posted speed and/or designed speed. We could leave that to the county. But approximately for a 25 mile an hour road, we're looking at advance of the crosswalk by 300 feet or so. And that could be shortened as appropriate. I recommend the addition of a few signs titled "Speed Strictly Radar Enforced Zone." You've seen them probably in other towns. I don't know if we have any throughout the city. But I would recommend one at the entrance of Ridge Avenue and also Memorial, onto Third and Fourth. And then probably two more evenly spaced throughout each direction of travel, east and west. Those certainly would not hurt. There was also a request to ask the county to repair the landscaping along... My understanding was along the curbs and corners on Pine and Comstock due to the buses making tight turns onto the street. Correct me if I'm wrong on that one, but I believe that's what you were referring to or the resident was referring to last night. And that covers the majority. If there's anything else that you could think of before I hand it over to the police department on some of these other issues from last night, then please, let's discuss.
So here's what I'm worried about, Joe. It's like we went from one extreme to the other because the concern last night with the resolution was that we didn't have an ask. Like we didn't have really a specific ask. It was all about this, let's get relief.
Right.
And I feel like we're asking... I mean, we... Listen, it's a strategy, right? Do you ask for everything and hope they don't tell you to take a long walk off a short cliff? Or do you ask for designated, you know, things that we absolutely need? So my concern with like the crosswalk stuff is that, and I could be absolutely wrong with this, but shouldn't we be stripping that? I mean, that's the city's job. So can you get your guys out to do the crosswalks at these places? I mean, asking the county to do that... We... Don't we do that every year, every couple of years anyway, would be my guess?
We don't do all of them.
I don't think all of them.
As a matter of fact, tomorrow...
Can you do the ones that we're using more now because of the Fourth Ave?
In April. Come on, you cannot paint a street in this way.
Well, I don't know that.
Okay, well, you can't... Yeah, nobody, the county, the state, nobody could paint a street with this until the winter is over. And this was done every year, and Jesse even brought up, close to where he lives, there's a half painted, half unpainted, slow school. And that hasn't been painted in three years. And as far as like, I agree with Amy, like we went from nothing to asking, you might as well say, throw in the kitchen sink. And, you know, it's a fine line between asking for something, and they may say... Well, they have a valid point. The other fine line is like, they're out of their friggin' minds. You know, this is stuff, Asbury Park, you're right, we're ripping up Fourth Avenue, we're going to try to help you. But hey, DPW, it's your responsibility to line the crosswalks. It's your streets, it's your children, and this should have been done. And yeah, you usually start at the end of July and went through August because we have a lot of school crossings because we don't have buses at every southeast, northwest.
Right.
And it is a long tedious process, but it should be done every year. And it was done every year till recently. And it's just, to ask them to like, to ask them to buy pedestrian crossings, that should have been done by us, you know? If the bridge... It's kind of like confusing to me because the bridge is being done, we're asking for safety concerns, it should have been done anyway. I mean, isn't that kind of like ridiculous? Like where's our responsibility for the children?
I understand, yeah. I just wanted to put it all out there, and then we...
Okay.
I figured it was easier to cross things off than to not think of them.
Yeah, no, and I get that strategy, and I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think, I don't, I don't... And I don't know what the best way to do it with the county, Tony, maybe you do. Is it throw in everything and see what sticks? Okay. So it's to have really pointed...
I think that we need to look at what's being affected by the change in the bus route at this point.
Okay.
And go from there. I would agree on looking at Fourth Avenue. I agree at looking at Comstock. I agree at looking at Pine Street.
Okay.
On some of the, maybe the cosmetic issues also, or the landscaping issues. My understanding from last night, unfortunately I wasn't here, was that we're talking about not so much the issue of landscaping other than trees. They said is that some of the low-hanging branches from trees are being ripped off. So I think that was something that...
Well, that's something we could handle for sure.
I think that we need to go in with a strategy, looking at those types of things that are being affected by this new bus route here.
Okay, so we'll say Fourth Ave., Joe, we'll ask, we'll ask for Third, we'll ask for Pine, and we'll ask for Comstock. And then when can you designate, when can you do the crosswalk stuff?
When you have nice weather.
Yeah, I believe it's 40 degrees and rising, and rising, which means it has to be steadily above 40.
I did have Robert Banchini out this... Today I took a ride over to Fourth and Pine with him today. Because I did hear that that was one of the major concerns about the lack of a crosswalk there since the police department is reassigning one of the school crossing guards to that corner. So we were looking at that today.
And I don't mind having, asking them for the signs. I mean, we're obviously rerouting people a different way as a result of the construction.
We're not rerouting children. The crosswalks were over there, so it says danger.
So state law stop for pedestrians within crosswalk. I don't mind asking for a few more of those signs.
Okay, I asked for them, but I mean, if I was the county, I'd say, hey, guys, the street was that way before the bridge was being replaced. Why is the bridge triggering this? Why did you buy it five years ago?
Okay, I don't think that's going to throw us out if we ask for a couple more of those.
No.
So I'm fine with that.
It won't throw you out, I mean...
I mean, I think you can make a logical argument that, listen, we're moving people over. Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable asking them to do the crosswalks if that's our job to do.
Give me some ideas, patrolmen, police officers, please. Give me some ideas on what time they patrol up and down Fourth Avenue? Because I only see patrolmen out there in the mornings.
Just to answer, we have instructed our patrol division along with some of our narcotic officers to proact to detail around the clock. We have a traffic division, which Officer Fiore is part of, that's mainly during the day shift. Also, every officer that's assigned to the two north area is specifically assigned to that area to address the speeding on Fourth and Third Avenue. So I'm going to say that's around the clock, contingent if they're not on a police call at the time.
Well, what I could say, they've been doing a good job in the mornings.
Yes.
But I don't see them in the afternoons. I'm just curious.
They were out there about 12 o'clock, but they were in the 1100 block of Fourth Avenue. I did see a car there. An officer there.
I've seen them morning, day, and night. And because living on Fourth Avenue, I see the blue lights going through my windows and everything. I think the police have done a great job. I know you guys have numbers, how many tickets you've given out and everything. One of the problems, unfortunately, a lot of people don't understand, even myself at one point, was I said, wow, we can make a fortune and balance the budget. We can write these tickets, the money goes to the state, it doesn't come to the city. The little bit of income that comes to the city, if we said, let's put police on overtime out there just to give out tickets, which I would have no problem doing, because that's what it would cost the city taxpayers money. Because we're not going to generate enough off of the tickets to pay for that overtime.
The only thing you're going to get is a portion of the court costs.
Right, and a portion of the tickets, maybe 30% of the tickets. It depends on how much the ticket is, depends on the speed limit above the... Right. And I would have no problem saying, you want to know something? Number one, we're shorthanded, we're short on vehicles, we're supposed to get new vehicles in April. We've had a couple of accidents because of the winter where we're down on vehicles, and we lost one of our speed vehicles in an accident, and we're trying to rotate the equipment from one car to the next. But that could be a week or so. But we said, let's put a police officer out there on overtime on a Saturday and Sunday when the manpower really isn't there. I would have no problem doing that, but I just want everybody to know that's going to cost us money. Will we generate enough? No, but could it send a good message on weekends to slow the speeding down? So if that's your decision, I would back that 100%. Thank you, turn it back over to you.
Just to answer some of the questions that were presented last night with regards to the signage on Sunset and Pine, there was a detour sign that was presently, that was out in front of that sign. Sunset Avenue is no longer the detour route. That sign has been moved to Sunset and Memorial Drive. That's the reason that it's no longer out on Sunset in the 1200 block. The other question that had been brought up, we made the determination that we're going to move one of our crossing guards to attempt to ease some of the traffic on Fourth Avenue. We're moving one of our crossing guards from Sunset and Langford and putting him on the corner of Fourth Avenue and Pine Street. We spoke with the city manager today, and also with regards to putting some crosswalks out there. So having a crossing guard there in the morning time and in the afternoon time while the children are to and from school will assist with some of the traffic, hopefully with regards to the speeders in that particular area. As I mentioned earlier, we have our officers assigned to that particular area to enforce traffic enforcement. Officer Fiore has a little bit more data, which he can present at this time with regards to what we have been doing in relation to the speeders itself.
As of yesterday, myself and Officer Butler was also assigned to the traffic. You know, we issued a total of, within about a seven-hour period, 27 summonses. Not every one of them was for speeding. Certain violators got several summonses, depending on what other violations they had. Today, believe it or not, the traffic was a little bit slower, so not as many summonses were issued. I don't have an exact figure as of today, I believe it was around 10 to 12. The speeds are not as high as stated. We have an average speed right now of 24.39 miles an hour on that road.
And how do you come up with the average speed?
We have, I don't know if you've noticed, we have a radar trailer that's been parked out on Fourth Avenue, and it's been out there for, I believe, it was 18 days, starting in January. Our most recent data we pulled on the 8th of this month gave the average number of cars. Now, right now, we're only measuring westbound traffic. It will be switched to the east side, for eastbound traffic, to get the data that way as well. Right now, Fourth Avenue is averaging 2,000 cars per day westbound. And average speed was 24.39 miles an hour. You know, there's certain factors to take into consideration. Some cars pass at 10 miles an hour, some are higher. Most of the summonses we issued were in the 36 to 37 mile an hour range. I believe there was one or two that were higher than that. Another thing we need to address is using Asbury Avenue as a detour route. There's certain things to be taken into consideration. Asbury Avenue right now is already pretty much maxed out with the amount of traffic it could handle. Today, for instance, approximately 5:00 this afternoon, I was at the intersection of Asbury and Main, looking west. The traffic was already backed up between Main Street, Memorial, and then Memorial to Langford. Asbury Avenue really can't handle that much more traffic with the traffic signals the way that they are now.
What is up with the traffic signals on Asbury Ave.? Well, that's a county, that's the county.
It's a county road.
There are signals. It's a county road, there are signals.
Those signals aren't wonderful, right? Because you get hit in every light on Asbury Ave.
It's the way that they're staggered right now, yeah.
So if we did something about that, that would possibly relieve some of the overflow?
A little bit.
And I'm saying this is something that takes Asbury Ave.
And I also believe that the majority of people who already know about the Fourth Avenue detour are going to continue to use the Fourth Avenue detour because it's the most convenient for them. They're not getting stuck at traffic lights. They can go from Sunset Avenue, Fifth Avenue, wherever they are in that section of town, still shoot right up Fourth Avenue and get to Ridge. I don't feel going to the county requesting that we move their detour is that beneficial. I think the people are still going to utilize the same route that they're familiar with. The majority of people that utilize Fourth Avenue are locals, they're local residents.
The only ones, I'm sorry, Joe, the only ones that I was really looking to detour were the buses.
And I think that's...
And the trucks, right?
Are we still waiting?
Buses and trucks.
I think we're still waiting to hear back from transit with the...
Okay, right, but yeah, cars are real...
Correct.
They wouldn't go for that, neither would I. But the main ones that are doing the most damage to, are already bad street, but they're doing more damage are the buses and the trucks.
Sure.
So that's what I was looking to remove, not all the cars.
And Mayor, and you're correct, we're actually, they're actually banned from going down Fourth Avenue by ordinance. We put the signs up on Third and Fourth banning vehicles. Is it over four tons, 8,000 pounds?
Four tons.
Four-ton limit on those streets, so I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
All right. Another topic that was brought up was the parking within 50 feet of a stop sign and 25 feet of an intersection are statutes. That's something we can certainly enforce if the city did want, wish to go that route. From a public relations standpoint, it might not be the best because those are residents that were going to be summoning. I mean, if you want to do it, we can certainly address that situation. I think that was brought up with the buses and some of the people not having a proper view when they came off of the side street to Fourth Avenue. I mean, we could start off with the warnings and go that route. It's something that's, being that it wasn't really a concern in the past, hadn't been addressed as much because they are, we understand that parking is at a premium and there's not as much parking as we would like there to be. Traffic calming methods on Fourth Avenue, another thing that would have been brought up in reference to stop signs and traffic signals, we would need a warrant analysis to go ahead with that. It's basically a traffic study. We'd have to total the crash data, the speed and amount of vehicles that are being handled on that roadway right now. Fourth Avenue...
Stop signs and stuff, so on.
Correction, correct. To put a stop sign, I understand, we understand that is a, it's an inconvenience for everybody right now, the Fourth Avenue detour. But to put a permanent fixture there is not the best answer. We're not going to meet it as far as a warrant analysis. Once we total up our crashes, knock wood, our crashes on Fourth Avenue are at a minimal. It's, we don't have anything right now data-wise that would support putting up a stop sign or traffic signal or anything like that. Crossing guards have been addressed. There'd also been another complaint that had been brought forward in reference to a Burke Construction trailer down the area Kingsley Street. I spoke with Jason Burke today in reference to this. The trailer was yesterday during unloading, was that first in Kingsley?
That was, yeah, no problem.
It was just one of the things I wanted to address.
That was a setup picture that...
Correct.
I knew it was a setup picture. That truck, the trailer was there for probably a half hour. Good photo op, that's taken. And they didn't take a photo op of the big signs, they importers open, so no explanation needed. We know that's not parked there every day.
That's all I have with that right now. Any questions?
Well, when would you get an answer about the buses and the trucks on Esberry Ave?
The buses were...
Waiting for New Jersey Transit to get back.
We're hoping this week or early, early next.
I'll reach out at Tom Clark tomorrow.
Okay. But isn't there one person at that bus?
Do what?
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Tony, you're going to, you're going to double, just revise this resolution with Joe?
Yeah, we discussed it, yeah.
Is up there any presentation yet?
Sit.
No, okay, so... No, I have one quick...
Go ahead.
You're all done with comments? The only comment I have, nobody's seen it in the, I call it the lobby, I guess it's the vestibule. When you walk in City Hall, there's some outstanding artwork by the students from the school. You'd be amazed, I am, the talent in Esberry Park. And they hang their artwork there every year from the high school. And it says, please, when you go in to pay your taxes, take a look at it and really appreciate it. It's outstanding. Again, I'm amazed at that much talent and the schools are always getting knocked about this, knocked this. And here's an excellent story that nobody's done it, and it should be a story. Thank you. That's all I have.
Madam City Manager?
I just have two announcements. The first is Saturday, February 14th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. The West Side Citizens United, they're going to be sponsoring the 8th Annual Valentine's Day luncheon for the senior citizens at the Senior Center on Springwood and Atkins. So any seniors 60 and over, please feel free, including you, Arnold. Feel free. It's a, it's a great time. They have good entertainment and great food.
And they love to dance.
They do. The second announcement, on Tuesday, February 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Housing Authority is going to host a community-wide forum on the Boston Way site and the Springwood Avenue Vision Plan. The meeting is open to the public. It's going to be located at the, the meeting's going to be at the middle school at 1200 Bangs Avenue. Again, between 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the 17th. That's all I have.
The only thing I was going to say, and I should have said it when we did the council matters, is that we have somebody spearheading a committee for the Sunset Ave. bridge to take in recommendations, just so it's not the, you know, taking, taking in what the public's saying. Danny Weiss and John Grant. But if people are interested in being on that committee or giving some feedback to it, give one of us your contact information, we'll make sure it gets to the right person. There's, I'm sure going to be a council member on that committee as well and hopefully Assembly and Freeholder. So we have a working relationship with all the entities that have to do with this.
Madam City Attorney?
I have nothing to address at this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're not going to take a short break. We're going to go right to the, we're running late, we apologize. So we're going to go right to the seven o'clock meeting at 7:15.
Regular meeting.